All right, let's go ahead and get started with the September 3rd City Council meeting, and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Christine.
Clark.
Here.
David.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Col.
Here.
Parsons.
Mayor Lumber.
Here.
Okay, and it looks like we added one additional golf course person to hire Mason Stark at $9.10 an hour.
Right.
Added, uh, social media, D5 Social Media Committee.
Yep.
Any other changes or additions, deletions? Okay, if not, have a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as revised. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to approve the minutes of the 8:15 briefing meeting, 8:19 regular meeting, and 8:27 special meeting. If I can have a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the three meetings as listed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Any questions on those? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to approve. Uh, it takes us to the public comment section of our board meeting. Those members from the public that would like to speak to the board right now can do so now. I'm guessing you all didn't just come to see me tonight, huh? Mindy.
Hi, Mindy Hanson, 317 Switchgrass Trail. I had read in the paper and in the minutes of last meeting about the proposal and the concerns about the golf course and Great Life. And so I just wanted to address the council and bring up a couple of issues and thoughts that I had, being a longtime golfer and a longtime member of the city. At this point, I feel that switching over to a management at Great Life is premature, even considering the fact is premature. We have just had a change of management out there that I think is positive. Andrew does a great job with what he does, and I think he's very business-minded. He has had great ideas to increase business in the past and to do things to make our course special, and hasn't always been able to utilize and to implement those changes. And I think he would do a really good job. And I think to switch management to Great Life at this point and not give him the opportunity to make something of the course and to be profitable and to have it as a continued amenity to the city is really The next item I wanted to address is the food. And in past councils, it has always been brought up that the Golf Course Kitchen, so to speak, didn't want to compete with businesses, local businesses in town, that they just wanted to dictate and to cater to the golfers and not try to compete with other businesses. I've always thought that was wrong. I think that, you know, business thrives on competition. And I think the golf course could have great food, and I don't know how many of you have eaten out there in the last year, two years, but the food has not been up to very good standards. It has went downhill fast, and their solution to it was to bring in pizza. And I don't think that they're even doing that now, or if they do it, it's not on a regular basis. So they used to do, you know, the good pizzas, bar pizzas, from what I, you know, would call them, and they don't even do that. They decided to bring in pizza from an outside source. So that's an expense that is really unnecessary. But I think if we could get someone running the kitchen that had a good business plan, they could be open year-round. And I'm not saying all day, every day, but I think if they had good specials on a Friday and Saturday night, people would come out and eat good food and have a happy hour drink, just like they go to 212 or Tailgaters or Corson. I think if you cater to those people, they will come. And you could then make it a profitable business all year-round. The one comment in the paper about talking to Yankton, which is a good place to go, about how great Great Life is for them. And I can see it is. It's very great for them because they're far away from Sioux Falls. They need the business to come from Sioux Falls, and they need those Sioux Falls golfers to be members of Great Life to come down and play their rounds. We don't need that. We average 125 to 130 rounds a year, if the weather's decent. We don't need the extra Great Life draw to get our rounds, to get people to come and play our course. I know the gentlemen golf, I don't know if any of the ladies golf, but there is, the course has been packed all summer long. You drive by there, and there are people on the course all the time. And I don't know that bringing in Great Life, just to bring in Great Life, is, would make a difference with that, in a positive way. I'm sure it would make a difference, but I don't think it would be positive. So if you're going to talk to, you know, Yankton and see how good it is, maybe talk to some of the courses that have left and see why they've left. And from what I've heard, they're going to tell you that their members can't get on, their tee times are limited, they don't have the outings that they had before because Great Life switches those to their major courses. And their condition of their course is not as good as if they ran it by themselves, as far as the greens and the tee boxes and everything else. So if you're, if we're going to look at courses that love Great Life, we should also look at courses that maybe don't like Great Life and have left Great Life. And we have a couple of them that are pretty local that could probably give you a good idea about that. The last point I want to make is we talk about the pool, and Mayor, your big push for the implementation of the benefits and the improvements to the pool, which I think is great, is part of the Park Board. I am fully in support of that and how we're financing that. I think that was a great idea that you had on how to get that done without raising taxes and going out for another bond referendum. But as far as a quality of life issue, I think we should consider the golf course the same way. The golf course is a quality of life issue for adults. It has been a part of the Brandon community for years, and now that we have maybe new management, and if we can get a kitchen that is up and running and under new management, or old management, however it works out, but under a new business plan that wants to make money in the kitchen and not just be there to sell a beer occasionally, I think we could make it very profitable. And I think it could continue to be a great amenity and quality of life item for the citizens of Brandon. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else?
Going. I will tell you that, as the mayor, and I think it's probably the thought process of the entire, most of the entire council here, that anything that we do do going down the road is just discussion. I, for one, was not around the first time when Great Life came in and talked to the city of Brandon. So I look at it as more of an education piece for me, just to hear them out. But trust me, folks, I'm not going to be sold. But I think I owe it to myself and to the rest of the community to at least listen. I have also been contacted by Landscape Unlimited. I think it's a company that runs the Sioux Falls golf courses. And I was very interested in talking to them, too, just listening to what they have to say, just as an education piece for myself and the other council members. But I can tell you from this seat anyhow, I have no preconceived ideas, none, on the going forward of the golf course. I think there's a lot of good possibilities for us to do it on our own, and there, I just want to listen to what other people say. But just because we are going to listen to people does not mean that we're going to jump in bed and have that company run our golf course. That's not the case. I think we owe it to ourselves. And we have some new council members, too, that probably weren't here five years ago when Great Life gave their pitch, or whatever you want to call it. So it'd be more of just an information piece for me and several of our new council members. But I thank you for your comments, and I appreciate you guys showing up tonight.
Moving forward, uh, golf course, first thing on the agenda. We have to approve a resignation from Zane Swenson. If I can have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resignation of our golf course manager, Zane Swenson, effective immediately. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we are proposing to account for our change in not having a manager. What we're going to do is take our three current members of, I'll call it, our golf course executive team and compensate them with a stipend of $500 a month for the remainder of the year for Andrew Bauer, $250 a month for Kelly Ilers, and Carrie Thill. Now, is that now through November? Did we decide?
Yeah, for both, for both Kelly and Carrie through November 30th, for Andrew through December 31st.
Okay. If I can have a motion to approve those stipends?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the stipends, as I laid out previously. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Mason Stark as an additional golf course employee at $9.10 an hour?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the hire of Mason Stark at $9.10 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We need to declare, it appears to me, I'll call it an old Zamboni from the ice rink, they have a nice term here called ice resurfacer. Nobody will know what that means. It's a Zamboni, as surplus property. If I can have a motion to approve it?
Correct. Recommendation from staff is a value of $5,000.
$5,000?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second to approve the 1988 Olympia Zamboni as surplus property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have next on the agenda in the Parks Department, I need approval to approve a baseball camp sponsored by Jake Adams on September 21st, 2019. If I can have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the baseball camp on September 21st. Brian, we asked you to look into an insurance question.
Yeah, we haven't got a hold of him yet, but we'll make sure that we get an assurance certificate that names the city as an additional insured.
Correct.
Will that certificate be from the Jake Adams Hitting Clinic? Because as a sponsor, I don't think that's sufficient.
We'll get it noted on there, whoever it is that it's for, the Jake Adams Hitting Clinic.
Okay. And if he's representing this Houston Astros, maybe even that's an option for them just to extend something from their policy?
Yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the baseball camp on September 21st signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request to waiver the shelter fees for the Brandon Valley Cross Country meets on September 11th, 14th, and 18th. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to waive the fees for the Cross Country meets. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, if I may make some comments from Park Board?
Certainly.
Just to give you a little bit of an update from Park Board. So the Ice Cats, which is our hockey group, are planning to hire a firm to do some fundraising for them, and they're in contract negotiations right now. So they are trying to come up with that firm for 45% to 60% of the amount they need to raise within the next six months. So they're keeping us apprised of what's going on with their fundraising. We put in a sand volleyball court. Did we put it in yet?
Going to.
Going to, at Tall Grass. Sand volleyball court, it was a request, so we're going to do that. We did restripe the tennis courts by the pool so that they can also be pickleball courts, and we're hearing lots of good things about that. People are using them, and they're hoping to set up a league and have a kickoff in the future. Next council meeting will be the Aspen Park presentation, the final one. And one of the things that's going to come out of that is the need for that second entrance. And so that's going to be something that we're going to be looking at this winter. And we hope to get Stone Ridge finished up this fall with the bathrooms and the shelter and the grading and all of that. So we hope to get that done in this budget cycle, yeah. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Moving forward, under administration, we have, under public safety, we have a fire department report for our information.
Just, the chiefs in the audience, how's the emergency bypass for the Holly project?
The bypass road is going to use three times since the construction project started and it's worked great for us.
Very good. Hopefully, we don't need it anymore. First item under D1 is the first reading of our budget ordinance. If I can have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of our budget ordinance. Any topics of conversation, discussion?
We changed, the only two that we changed from the last work session was we increased the chamber, $15,000, decreased the development foundation, $15,000. And then we'll take a look at that at the end of the year, next December, to see if we've got an excess of third penny sales tax revenue coming in over what we budgeted.
So I have a couple of comments. So we talked about the pool a little bit, and maybe there's more information that I am not privy to yet. But when we started the budget, we were going off the recommendation from the joint meeting that we had with the council and the Park Board, which I believe we had excellent attendance. And the recommendation at that meeting was to move forward with improvements at like $130,000 and move forward with design. And there was a lot of discussion about the infrastructure needs that we have, which are unprecedented in Brandon, putting wants before needs. The need for a second entrance exit to the park probably took precedence over changing it to full-on pool construction in 2020. So I'm still confused why we went from $130,000 pool improvements to 1.6 million, which is not the recommendation that came out of that meeting. So I guess I am not in favor of that in the budget. And then the other concern I have is I still don't feel like the questions have been answered around the chamber. And don't get me wrong, it's not that I don't support the chamber. I'm a member, I spent a lot of money with the chamber. I just would like to better understand, now as a taxpayer, why I'm also going to spend more money with the chamber. And I know the argument was made that a lot of other communities pay their chamber more than Brandon pays their chamber, but maybe those other communities don't have the business contributions that ours do. And maybe they do, but I just, I feel like, as somebody spending taxpayer dollars, I can't answer that question as to why we're asking our residents to pay more. So those are the two that I have concern with in the budget. And I've brought those up at budget meetings, but I'll say them here publicly.
I will address the pool, since I'm the one that pushed real hard to get that through. I wanted to take the Band-Aid off of that situation. It came across to me as a very, very high priority need for the city of Brandon. And so I pushed real hard and came up with, worked with the administration, came up with some financing solutions that combined utilizing existing fund balance and current Park Board capital improvements that were in their current budget. We came up with about 1.2 million, was it, Brian, for the whole project, or 1.6?
1.6. Whole project is 1.6. Fund balance towards that would be about 1.1.
1.1, okay. A lot of factors went in that I just, I was very firm and very strong that I believed it was a need and a want of this community, and I think it's a very good thing. We are, Councilmember Clark, we are, you're correct, we are in need of a lot of infrastructure repairs. But this was a one-shot. I thought we could do a quality of life issue with the community. I thought it was a one-time deal, a good use of fund balance to get that project pushed forward. So I was the one that pushed hard, and we discussed, we went over it in the budget work session, so everybody's aware of it, correct? So that's my direction on the pool.
I can do my best to speak to the chamber again, Dana. Again, we're going to use it towards marketing efforts. I don't know what else to tell you except that. And then the partnership that we're going to go down the road with the school district on. But we're going to do some more marketing. I think it's a worthwhile investment that the city make. And I'm not on the marketing committee, so I can't tell you specifics yet, but I can assure you that that's what it's going to be used for. That and the upcoming partnership that we're going to do with the school.
Brian, since it is my first go-around with the whole budget process with the city, goes through how many readings?
Two.
Two readings of the council before it's officially approved?
Correct.
Which would be approximately first of October, end of September?
It'll be the next council meeting, September 16th.
15.
Would be the second reading.
Okay. And by law, we have to have it approved by end of September?
By the end of September.
Okay. Okay. So we are just approving the first reading tonight?
Correct.
Any further discussion, comments? If not, all those in favor of approving the first reading of the budget ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Christine, would you call the roll, just to get everyone on record?
Clark?
David?
Yes.
Nate?
No.
Gotcha. Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Col?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
So what I have there, 5-1?
5-1.
Okay. Very good. We have a wage adjustment, a step increase for Melissa Labonne to $20.99 an hour. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion is second to approve Melissa Labonne's step increase, moving her salary to $20.99 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number D3 is a committee appointment discussion. Dana, you requested this be on the agenda?
I did, kind of a repeat from Thursday. You know, I feel like we've taken a step in the wrong direction with our committees. My understanding is the council is supposed to decide what committees we need, and then usually through some conversation and input, and oftentimes volunteering or discussion on interests, passions, flexibility with scheduling, then the appointment is made. But there have been committees that have been just kind of like, been handled behind the scenes, informed, and appointed with other council members, not even knowing of their existence. So I feel like we would do, we would be much better served to do it as we had done it before. I understand, as the formality, the mayor appoints, but I think we are much better served by doing it in the open with input. And I don't know if that's just a directional thing, or if we need to change the ordinance. And maybe I'm the only one that cares. I don't know.
I have a question. So you, you're basically saying that we just want to talk about the committees, and then ultimately the mayor still has, will appoint whoever, but at least he can hear the input of, like, let's say, the golf committee. Well, we know these gentlemen like to golf, so then if they're passionate about it, like, if there was a golf committee formed, is that what you're talking about, then that, or?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily fair to expect the mayor to know what each of us is passionate about or interested in, or what we have the flexibility to participate in. So just to be, have them arise behind the scenes and told, you're on here and you're on here, I don't think that's serving us well, and I think it's making some of us miss opportunities to be involved where we want to be involved. The last committee formation I think we did publicly was back when, and this was many months ago, when we had the engineering contracts. We discussed it here. I think Tim and I volunteered. The mayor then appointed us to look at the engineering contracts for the Core and Rushmore projects. But since then, they've all been handled differently. And that's what I would like to revert back to.
Okay. I guess I might have a little bit of a loss in the fact that I'm not sure what committees I've appointed members to. The only one I know of that I've appointed members to is the core construction area. Can you correct me if I'm wrong, Brian? Have I appointed, I don't know, I have a very short memory, I guess, too. Maybe I have appointed other ones.
I think that's it.
The council liaisons.
The liaisons for, with each party. It was done in May at the organizational meeting.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Council members?
How many current committees do we have?
Currently doing anything, it's the Core Reconstruction Committee, the Water Conservation Committee. The Water Development Committee is on hiatus until later, probably January.
We'll have an insurance one.
Yep.
But we haven't formed that yet. We haven't formed the golf course one, or the insurance one, or even talked about if we're going to form those for sure. So we really only have two committees right now.
Water Development.
Water Development.
No, the Development Committee, the one that Chuck.
Oh, yes. Okay.
There's Park Board.
Okay. Any other further comments, or any action that anybody's requesting?
There's a committee that was formed behind the scenes for the social media consultant that was behind the scenes.
As far as the social media, it is not a committee. It's a project team or staff.
But they were council. Yeah, wanted as well.
There is not council on it.
Anything moving forward in the form of a motion or a recommendation for anything that any council member would like to make? Okay. Item D4, agenda items discussion. I think Dana requested that on the agenda.
We just discussed it.
I thought we discussed committee appointment discussion.
Oh, okay.
Agenda item discussion?
Question for Lisa. More than me is the process for placing items on the agenda, because we had this happen where the item under D5 Social Media Committee was asked to be placed on the agenda, and it, it was not. So I wanted to get clarification on that. So the concern here is if a council person asks for something to be on the agenda, and the mayor says he doesn't want it on the agenda, then it becomes performing work, and then it can, in essence, censor what goes on the agenda. And Lisa, you were going to look into that?
So we redid our ordinances about six months ago so that the council could put something on the agenda. That's how it was written. Before, the council members didn't have the ability to do that. An issue was raised where a council member, if a council member wants to put something on the agenda, and the mayor who directs the, the agenda for the council meeting, if the mayor would direct staff to not put something on the agenda, the question is, what do you do then? Because you have a staff member who's been directed by superior to not do that. It wasn't something that we've ever had happen in ten- It wasn't something that we've ever had happen in ten-plus years. It's not something our ordinance addresses. In the event that the council wants to have the ordinance revised, we can certainly make a revision to the ordinance to specifically take care of that issue, because otherwise, you're having a staff member that's getting an order from the mayor, and then could potentially be insubordinate if that directive is not followed and the council member's directive to put something on the agenda is. So, I can certainly draft something if the council wants me to draft revisions of the ordinance, something like, in the event that happens, that upon the consent of two, or three, or four, whatever the council wants, to have that item placed on the agenda over the directive of the mayor, that that's how we'll handle it. I couldn't find anything that specifically directs that issue in state law, or in the municipal codes that I have. But it is something you could draft if the council wants me to draft. It's not something that's come up before, but we certainly can try and fix it that way, if I get that direction.
To be clear, I requested the item not to be on the agenda, because I was going to not be present at the board meeting, and the agenda item had something to do with me. So, it's hard to answer something if you're not gonna be in the room. So, I requested it be deferred until I got back. And I, as I told you during our briefing meeting, that would be my practice all along. I'm not gonna just squash something off the agenda. I was gonna be gone. I knew I was gonna be gone from that board meeting. With that said, is there any desire to have Lisa revise the ordinance on where it is right now?
For me, there is. And I understand your point, Mayor Lundberg, but this was just a discussion point, and this was, item five for the social media committee, it was time-sensitive, because we only had so many times where our consultant was here, and I had originally asked to be involved in this a month ago, and was told no, and then asked for it to be on the agenda, and was told no. So, it caused a month to go by. So, sometimes things are time-sensitive, and I don't have a concern that you're gonna run things in an inappropriate way, but I do think it's a loophole that we need to fix. I mean, you could be hit by a bus tomorrow, and we have a different mayor in here that does use that loophole as a way to keep things off the agenda. So, I just, I think it's just the prudent thing to do, to make sure that we are able to get things on the agenda. And if we need to have a backup plan to have another council person or two give their thumbs up, that's appropriate.
Comments? Would you like to put it in the form of a formal request of Lisa, or?
That motion for us to fix that loophole.
Is there a second?
Okay, so this would just basically be, we're in the ordinance, we could say three members. I just feel like if we have, oh, sorry.
Point of procedure here.
I have to do second to talk about it?
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Okay, so I can do, okay. Sorry. Still learning all this, sorry. So, basically, it's just a way, because I don't have any concerns with mayor, and I completely, I think this was a miscommunication completely, and I brought this up before. I think it's not a bad thing to have people care about a community. It's a wonderful thing. And I think it just happened where it was miscommunicated to, you know, council, to Dana, why it wasn't put on there. I think we just need probably better at doing that. But then, I see your point, where in the future, maybe it is, like I said, I don't see this with this mayor, but you never know going in the future, ten years from now. Is it something where somebody with power is not gonna let us, as council members, put things on the agenda without at least a say in it? So, I don't know. I guess I'm open for discussion. I don't know if anybody, I just, I see both sides. Like, I think the mayor should have a say in it, but at the same time, I always just worry about in the future if there's, you know, this was completely miscommunication, but it brought something to light where, I don't know. Those are just my thoughts.
Very good. Any other discussion? Just FYI, I plan on being here through tomorrow, that's the only thing I'm gonna guarantee. Through tomorrow. Past that, it's, it's, nobody knows.
Watch out for the buses.
Right, right. Any other discussion? If not, Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Nay.
Jorgensen?
Nay.
Call?
Nay.
Parsons?
Nay.
Fails?
Motion fails five to one.
Four to.
Four to two.
Two.
Four to two. Okay. Item number D5 is the social media committee discussion. It was a little bit discussed in the previous one, but we'll go ahead and tackle that, or anything further, Dana?
No, there's really nothing further. The time's kind of elapsed. We only have a handful of meetings left with Heather, as I understand it, so.
Has the social media consultant met with all of you people as council members?
Yes.
And administration? I think she's, I'm the only one she hasn't had a chance to meet with yet.
Yes.
Correct?
I was checking with council member Jorgensen. Yes, you are the only one.
So, I'm in the black sheep.
Oh, no, no.
I'm scheduled for Friday afternoon, so.
I'm just not scheduled. She reached out, not because it hurts, she did reach out.
Very good. Proceeding then. Getting good impact, or good input and feedback from all of that, Brian?
Yes.
Street Department, item E1, there's a work report in there. There's also, I think, more of a reminder, there's an update on the 406 exit. There's a public meeting at the Holiday Inn Express on September eighteenth at six PM.
Correct.
The intersection, I don't know. Boy, we know, we battled that lately. So, come one, come all to that, provide some input. Strength in numbers, people. I truly believe that, especially when it comes to a state project, there is definitely strength in numbers from you. It matters when it comes from you. When I stand up there and I have the title behind my name of the mayor, it's just not as, as strong or as important as it comes to you, from Joe Citizen. That's who they really respect. So, come one, all, come all, come one, come all to that meeting, please, so we can hopefully get something done out there. Anything additional on that, Brian?
No.
FYI. Next item on the agenda is a water rate study proposal from AE2S. It was broken down into five components. It's the recommendation from the administration to select all five of those components for a rate study, which would include a tiered.
A tiered water rate.
Analysis.
Correct.
And tiered water rate analysis, the more you use, the higher you pay.
Correct.
Type analysis, to try to deal with all of our issues with summertime watering and watering the lawn, so that's gonna be included in the analysis. That whole study comes at a cost of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, I believe, for all the components.
Correct. That fifth task with the connection fee analysis is in addition to the rate study itself. So, it's twenty-two, eight twenty-six for the rate study, and ninety-nine, sixty-eight for the look at connection fees. So, for a total of thirty-two, seven ninety-four, but I would recommend doing all five tasks.
And the connection fees for a layman like myself, that's the SDC charge that we talk about, the hookup on fee?
Very similar. SDC charge system, development charges are from the city of Sioux Falls for connections to the water system, to pay for past and future improvements in their wastewater system. As you look at new improvements to a utility, and we're looking at, you know, a water treatment facility, at least one water tower, so those are new components, and in those components, we build capacity for new customers. So, those citizens that are currently hooked into the system will pay for their share of the facility over the next twenty years through their rates. So, connection fee is how those new folks who aren't here, who are building capacity for, how do they buy into the system?
Okay. Very good. So, I would look for a motion to approve the proposal from AE2S to include all five components that they outlined in their proposal, total amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four.
So moved.
Right.
Motion is second to approve the water rate study proposal from AE2S for a total of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Any further discussion?
I did have a question, Mayor. So, on page forty-six, they're talking about transportation, and we've gone round and round on this before. They're showing sixty-five cents a mile for the transportation, and the IRS reimbursement is at fifty-eight cents. And I know it's a little thing, but I don't need to pay for their, or we don't need to pay for their Denali or their big vehicle. So, we had this issue with our previous, previous engineer. Is that standard?
It is. AE2S, a lot of the meetings that we have, we have at their office, because they have more technology than we do, because the individual that's doing the rate study is out of Fargo. So, we usually do things teleconferencing. So, there's not much transportation on their end, on their end. We usually go to their offices.
Hope that might be good.
And, and my understanding is, we're just approving the proposal tonight, that there'll be a contract, so the proposal is to spend up to this amount and have these five phases, and the actual contract terms will be delineated. So, in the event that's something the council wants to not have on there, and we wanna negotiate that out, we can certainly approach them like we did previous contractors.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to approve the low bid for the Aspen Forest Main and Water Main project mishap, I guess I'll call it. Metro Construction, Inc. had the low bid for four hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Need a motion to approve that low bid? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this low bid, which is the sewer out by the golf course, the forest main.
It's the sewer main that came up out of the river bottom during the floods, and we've also driven there a water main and some, not landscaping, but some erosion control in the ditch. There's more to continue fighting that. So, in this instance, when that sewer main was put in, twenty years ago or so, it was about five feet below the bottom of the river. So, over the last twenty years, it's eroded five feet, and I think we're putting it ten feet below the bottom of the river now. So, should be forty years.
The reason I use the term mishap is this is an unplanned expenditure. This wasn't in our plans, but this was gonna break down, so this is why we carry a fund balance. Did I get a motion and a second on this?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Besides me flapping my lips. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else from the council, new business-wise?
Just two things, just to note, you've got probably the final progress report on the AE2S water study. That report is finalized, we'll get that on the website this week, so anybody that wants to read it certainly can. And then, you've got the water conservation committee's report from their last meeting on August twentieth in your packet. Other than that, we will need to go into executive session for personnel and pending litigation.
Litigation and potential litigation.
I need a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter, litigation, and I didn't hear the third one, you need to turn your mic on.
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation.
Stop it.
Motion is second to go into executive session at six forty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.